Good morning. I'd like to go ahead and call the November 26, 9:00 AM Board of Supervisors meeting to order. As tradition, we'll start with a moment of silence. Phil, would you do the pledge allegiance today for us? Filmer?
No, I'm sorry.
No? Okay, all right. Bob, would you do the pledge allegiance for us?
Thank you, Bob. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda? Moving right along. Consent agenda. Consent agenda is usually items that are non-controversial. Are there any consent agenda items that need to be pulled either from the board or from the public? I'm not hearing anything. Wouldn't entertain a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda 5-1 through 5-11.
Second. Motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Moving right along here. We are moving a little too quick. I've got 9:03, so we'll go ahead and we can go to supervisors' weekly calendars. Go ahead, Bruno.
So, in order to take a little bit more time, I also want to explain a couple of meetings that we've had. One was about a month ago and one was yesterday, and they were pretty much the same meetings, but with different groups. As you know, the board approved to create the Middle Creek Restoration Committee with Supervisor Crandall and myself on the committee. We've been meeting and interacting with our federal and state partners to try and get things moving, to figure out where else there might be funding to complete the process. We've also been meeting with PG&E and Caltrans to discuss some of the changes that need to happen over that course of that project in order to make everything come to a head at all at the same time, because we can't flood the area and then have them fix their portions. First meeting we had, not first meeting, but one of the first meetings that I want to talk to you about was with Congressman John Garamendi and with Assemblywoman Cecilia Aguirre-Curry. They got to really see and walk through the project site, understand what the project was about, how it would impact our county. And yesterday, we did the same type of meeting, but with Army Corps of Engineer, who has been part of the design process for how this project is going to come to fruition. And so, it was good to meet the group first, because it's a new project manager, but it was also really good to discuss the project in depth, see what other alternative routes we have to get to the last results that we're looking for. That way, we're not stuck thinking that there's only one way to get through this. The people on the committee are definitely dedicated. As you know, they were part of the Middle Creek Restoration Coalition before this already as volunteers, definitely dedicated to making this happen. I felt and I feel, and I'm sure Supervisor Crandall can pitch in his own opinion, that these meetings so far have been really positive in making sure that these are going to be moving forward. That project is seen as a priority, and I'll put air quotes around priority, for appropriations. It was approved back in 2007. It is being pushed by both Congressman Mike Thompson and Congressman John Garamendi to be priority projects for their districts in their area. And so, I think we're getting the support we're looking for from the top all the way down to the bottom, and I'm looking forward to seeing what we keep chipping away and making this project slowly morph and move forward. So, just wanted to kind of highlight that, because I think that was, those are good things that are happening. I think it impacts all of us if we can help heal our lake and make it a more, bring it back to its original state. The rest of the week is pretty much done for me after today. Next week, I will be back in the office. We do have a Middle Creek Restoration Committee meeting on Monday. We don't have a board meeting, but I will be going to Woodland Community College. I'm part of one of their advisory boards for the middle college high school program that they have, which is an amazing program. It's where some of their high school students take up to six college credits every single semester, with the chance that if they start as freshmen, they might actually graduate high school with an AA degree, which means they can transfer to a college rather than start fresh at a college if they choose to do so. So, I really appreciate that meeting, that program. Look forward to that meeting on Wednesday. I'm going back again to Woodland Community College. A meeting with Chef Cabreros from Roma's Cafe in the Culinary Arts Program to discuss some of his projects. And then Thursday, and also Wednesday morning, I'll be at the CC4C meeting. And on Thursday, start off the day with judge's breakfast. Looks like I'm pretty empty in the rest of that day at this moment. And then on the 6th, we are looking to have our industrial hemp meeting at 2:00 PM, because I wasn't able to get the chambers. HR had already taken up that timeframe for 10:00 AM, so we'll see if we can meet at 2:00 PM.
All right, Bruno.
And then back on the following week to start all this all over again.
Well, you did a good job there, Bruno. Continue with calendars, Rob. Supervisor Brown.
I have appointment this afternoon in Santa Rosa at 2:00. And I'll have to make it two. And then, I don't have a whole lot scheduled this week, other than...
Eating.
What's that?
Eating.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanksgiving for a vegetarian is not... Whatever.
You could get the green beans.
Yeah, I do. But I'll be in the office. I'll be working on my Christmas list, so we got the foster child Christmas list that I'm working on, and it's been received really well. So, I've got a lot of catching up to do to get that list updated today, so appreciate that. And then, I'll be at the hemp meeting that you talked about earlier, so that's all I've got.
Supervisor Crandall?
So, I'll pitch in on the discussion about the meetings with the Middle Creek Restoration Project. It has been very productive for me to see so many different folks come together. The group that was intact already, Harry and Peter, they've been on task with that for quite some time anyhow, and they've just been waiting to get some people at the table. And so, it's just so, it's such a blessing to have the Congressman Cecilia Aguirre-Curry come, and then the Army Corps just right in tune come as well. And I know they met with them prior, I think, last year. So, to get a chance to hear them say the things that are going to move the project forward, or at least get it on the radar, there's a lot of, we know there's bureaucracy, we know there's funding issues and things like that, but at least we're all working together on it, and we know that there are steps that need to be made. And as long as we make those steps, I think we're, you know, at least moving the project along. And so, yeah, I think it's a really productive group, and yesterday's meeting was really good. It was good to see, it's good to see folks come there. Jessica was there. It was really good. So, this week, let's see, today, I think I might have a couple of meetings afterwards with constituents. Tomorrow, I know I'll have a meeting at the office. I'm not sure exactly what time with Carol, what we're going to talk about. I forgot what, but I know that we said something. Next week, Middle Creek Restoration on the 2nd, CAO meeting. And then, since we don't have a Board of Supervisors meeting, I was going to go to the Regional Water Quality Control Board in Sacramento, since their meetings usually fall on the same days that we have. And Lucerne's been trying to get loan forgiveness, loan forgiveness deemed over in, for Calwater, or work for that situation because of the rates of the water. Wednesday, I'll have Earth, and then, of course, there's the CSAC reunion dinner that I think we'll be going to as the new supervisors' dinner. We went, Bruno and myself went through the new supervisors' institute, and they invited us to a dinner the night of the 4th. So, it's in San Francisco. 5th and the 6th, pretty much just, I think there are going to be days that I catch up with emails, phone calls, maybe set a couple of appointments with some constituents. And then, back here on the 10th, we're in the Board of Supervisors meeting.
All right. Meetings today, after this, agenda review, and then, just following up on some emails. The rest of the week, too, same thing, kind of a clear calendar on, besides Thanksgiving, we'll be serving Thanksgiving dinner from 2:00 to 5:00 at the Event Center at Twin Bank Casino. It's the fifth year we've done it since the Valley Fire, and hopefully, we have 600 or 700 people like we had last year. So, that'll be a good event. Moving right on into the next week, I'll be traveling down to CSAC. I have the Board of Directors on Thursday with the CSAC conference. And then, moving on to the 9th, I will be in Sacramento for the State Board of Fire Services meeting, my second meeting there at the State Fire Marshal's Office, and then back here on the 10th for the meeting. Thank you very much for the calendar supervisors. Moving right along, go ahead and take up public input. I do have one public input. Phil Murphy, Economic Development.
First, I'd like to make it clear that I do not pledge allegiance to this country as long as it's engaged in illegal wars, because that's in conflict with my religious beliefs. But the reason I came here today is to ask, at what meeting was the decision change that was made at the April 6 meeting to set up a negotiation meeting between the county and the city of Lakeport regarding the annexation? Because a commitment was made by the board to the public to set up a meeting that week. And I'm just wondering, when did that change?
Well...
We can't address the public input.
Yeah, yeah, public input, you know, if you want to talk to somebody on the committee or something afterwards, you know, we can reach out to...
Well, I was just assuming that a decision had been changed, because that didn't happen, and I find it hard to believe that a $15 million project just fell through the cracks because no one was paying attention. So, I'm just asking a simple, basic question. When did that change?
Public input, you know, we are not to respond to public input. Public input...
Perhaps you could have a staff member respond to that question, because I'm just asking a basic question. When did it change?
What I said is, we'd be willing, you know, if you want to make contact after the meeting, we will have a conversation with you, Phil.
I think, I think it's an easy, it's an easy answer. Just because it hasn't happened yet doesn't mean it's changed.
It has happened.
It has happened.
Well, there's going to be more meetings, too. You know, he's talking about the public meeting.
Oh, the public meeting.
No, he's talking about the public meeting. The public meeting has not happened yet. There's one that happened with the residents down there, but that's, nothing's changed about that, so...
Well, no, it was, it was said that that meeting date would be set by the end of that week, yet...
I think you misunderstood.
A meeting date.
That was supposed to be a meeting between Lakeport and Lake County.
Right. And when did that happen?
There have been a number of them since then.
And that was a public meeting?
No. It was a negotiations meeting.
It was a, okay. Okay, I don't know how you have meetings between the city and the county that are, that the public has no awareness of or ability to participate in. That's kind of an odd way to run a government without the public having any idea what's going on. Weird policy, weird way to run a government. And there seems to be no outcome from that meeting, because nothing's changed. Again, weird way to run a government.
Thank you, Phil. All right, moving right along. 6.2, item 191101, 9:06 AM, consideration of continuation of a local health emergency in order prohibiting the endangerment of the community through the unsafe removal, transportation, and disposal of fire debris for the Mendocino Complex Fire. Good morning.
Good morning, your Board. Chair Simon, Denise Palmero, Health Services Director, and Jesse King, our Environmental Health Director. We're, I'm here on behalf of Dr. Pace, our Public Health Officer, who sends his regrets, but he could not be here today. So, I'm here to, in his place. The Health Department is, and the Public Health Officer is, asking your Board to continue the local health emergency as it relates to the unsafe removal and transportation and disposal from the Mendocino Complex Fire. There are still some properties that have not yet been cleaned up, as we've discussed in prior board meetings. Jesse can give you an update on where that is.
Okay.
Good morning, Board. Jesse with Environmental Health. This is the email I got it later afternoon yesterday from CalRecycle, telling us that CalOES has directed CalRecycle to remobilize consultant contractor to Lake County as early next Monday, December 2. It's a long email, so I don't want to go through the whole thing. For us to, our job will be to facilitate whatever the CalRecycle need to remobilize. And the good news is, out of this email, if I see, is CalRecycle obtained all the necessary permits that we needed from the national forest to start the process.
Any questions from the Board?
No. Okay. Thank you.
All right, any public input on this item? No, all right. Seeing none, go ahead and close the public input. Bring it back to the Board.
I just want to make a quick statement. We were invited, Supervisor Crandall and I were invited to be part of the phone calls, to listen in on the process. I just want to say thank you for being patient, because I know that in just the four, three weeks that I was involved, I was very impatient. They would tell us, I guess this was a continuous statement, "We will get the permits to you tomorrow," and that was six months in the making, a year in the making, and that's what they told us over the phone. I spoke up and said, "If it doesn't happen tomorrow, we need to reconvene this phone call." Instead of reconvening the phone call, they followed up with an email saying that this is, again, when the permits would be completed, so there's no need for further interaction. And again, yet, it still took another two weeks for this to happen. So, I just want to say thank you for being patient and for trying to get something done. Unfortunately, that's, it's out of our hands. We can't just go on people's properties, and we can't just start doing cleanup whenever we want, because it needs to happen. There's a process. And I just wanted to make sure that people were aware that it's not just doing nothing and keep doing the same thing. It's really that the people who are supposed to get the final signature have been, for lack of a better word, just dragging their feet on us. And I'm glad that we're finally where we are, and hopefully, the weather can cooperate with us so we can get it done as soon as possible. If not, we might have to wait till later on in 2020, or in early 2020 to get it done. But at least, the permits are done and we're set to go. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent.
And thank you for taking the time, Supervisors, to get on that call. The support is welcome. All right, thank you. Have a good day. Happy Thanksgiving.
So, a motion to approve the continuation of a local health emergency in order prohibiting the, is that what this is?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure, because they walk away.
Sorry.
In order prohibiting the endangerment of the community throughout the unsafe removal, transportation, and disposal of fire debris for the Mendocino Complex Fire.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, your Board. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. Moving right along, 6.3, our 9-10 item, presentation of a proclamation recognizing Lucerne, California as a gateway to the Berriessa Snow Mountain National Monument.
All right. Bruno, you want to come up with me?
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to come up.
So, this proclamation is, to proclamation recognizing Lucerne, California as gateway to Berriessa Snow Mountain National Monument. And I just want to take the time also to acknowledge John Jensen, who's here. He's part of the Lucerne Area Town Hall. And with the work of him, Bruno, and some other folks, we've been talking about doing this proclamation and recognizing Lucerne as a gateway. The national monument is behind us and goes all the way around the east side of Lake County. And so, thank you for your hard work on this, and Bruno, thank you for sparking the fire on this as well. So, that's why I invited Bruno up, because he's, you know, he's really been helping me out with a lot of different things in my district. I have a really big district, and at times, he just, he grabs them for me. So, I just wanted to allow him a chance to, to be up here with us, because he's a part of it, so. So, proclamation recognizing Lucerne, California as a gateway to the Berriessa Snow Mountain National Monument, whereas the Berriessa Snow Mountain National Monument was created by a proclamation issued on July 10, 2015, by President Barack Obama under the Antiquities Act, and whereas the national monument is a pristine wilderness and forest area available to the public for outdoor recreation, and whereas the access road to the national monument is in close proximity to the town of Lucerne, and whereas the town of Lucerne and the county as a whole would benefit economically from this designation, whereas the national monument is within easy driving distance for residents of San Francisco Bay Area, the Sacramento Metropolitan Region, and expanding communities of the North Bay Areas, and whereas the national monument presents a prime opportunity for travel marketing to regional, national, and international travelers, and whereas the Lucerne Area Town Hall recognizes Lucerne as gateway to the Berriessa Snow Mountain National Monument. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors declares this local recognition for the purpose of inclusion in Lake County marketing materials and efforts. Pass and adopted this 26th day of November, 2019. Sign, Chairman Moke signing.
Nobody knows about this monument but the people in this room, you guys. This is fascinating. Bruno, indeed, gave me the idea. He was the catalyst when he made a comment about wanting an architectural feature, recognizing the monument. It turned into a very quick motion and resolution for the town hall, and every person I've told that comes into my business says, "Wow, I'm near a national monument." And then, I tell them, "Yeah, you're standing next to a national monument, an active volcano and a prehistoric lake," and they're wowed. A couple actually bought a home here because of that initial conversation. This is a tremendous marketing opportunity for our county that we've overlooked, and I'm so, so thrilled to see the Board finally adopting this and pushing this forward, making it happen. So, now, we can use this in all of our marketing materials, the TID, the CTAs. All those folks can use this and help us grow our economy here. Thanks.
And as you can see in the picture, if you could see in the picture, these signs are sprouting up everywhere in the entryways of Lake County to let people know that they can find this national monument here. We've been in contact with Rebecca Wong, who is from the Bureau of Land Management, or also the U.S. Department of Forestry, and she is working on pamphlets, and we hope to eventually flood our hotels and our visitor centers with all of these pamphlets. We need to highlight what we have. We have something really beautiful, and we should be proud of, and we should be absolutely advertising it to the world, so, thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Andy.
All right, a little bit earlier, early for our 6.4 item, so we'll go ahead and move on to 7.2, consideration of addition of a special meeting to the Board's annual meeting calendar for 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you recall, around this time last year, your Board met jointly with the two cities here, and the topic of which was the Strategic Economic Development Plan. And at that time, it was informally agreed that the three jurisdictions would come together annually for that same purpose. And so, we're proposing to add one special meeting to your calendar on December 9 at 9:00 AM, and it is to be held in Kelseyville at, I believe, the same location as last year.
Okay, any comments from the Board?
Yes, I'm assuming that it's good with the cities.
Oh, yes. Yeah, the date has been vetted with all parties.
Just to go back to my calendar, on December 9, I do have a meeting, the State Board of Fire Services, so I will be attending that meeting. I won't be in attendance at the December 9 meeting, but I definitely think that's a positive thing moving forward, so. Any more comment from the Board? Any public input on this item? All right, seeing none, go ahead and bring it back to the Board for action.
I move to approve the addition of a special meeting to the Board's annual meeting calendar for 2019 on December 9.
Second. There's been a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion passes. Yeah, let's move on to item 7.5, consideration of appointments of the Director and alternate to this California State Association of Counties Board of Directors for 2020.
So, Mr. Chair, each year, CSAC asks that your Board go ahead and make your appointments for the new year at this time, rather than waiting to your first meeting in January, because they need to put materials together for the annual conference, which is coming right up. And so, that's why this is on your agenda. As you know, you also do the same thing for your RCRC appointments ahead of time for the same reasons. And so, at present, Supervisor Simon is the primary appointee to CSAC, and I believe, is it correct, Bruno, that you are the Supervisor Sabatier is the, is the second appointee to CSAC? I didn't bring my list in here with me.
I thought it was Moke and Tina.
Moke and Tina. Okay, thank you.
I could be wrong. I hope I'm not wrong, because I haven't gone to...
So, does your Board, I think that is correct. Does your Board wish that to stay the same for 2020?
Any discussion from the Board?
Has this been discussed with Tina? Has she left any messages to say she would like to remain as the alternate? Because I'd hate to just continue as is. I mean, I guess we could change at any time in the future.
You can.
Just wondering if there was any kind of input.
Not, not a direct request, no.
Is there any interest, who's interested?
From anybody else, yeah, from the Board.
Well, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You haven't expressed your interest to continue, so...
Yeah, you know, hopefully, as things move along, who will be the Chair of the Board? I would be. If there's an interest from the Board, I would be interested in being the alternate if someone else is interested in stepping up and being the CSAC representative, the actual delegate.
Got it. Can you, do you know what the schedule looks like? I didn't look at the, like, how often they meet, where they typically meet.
Usually, meet in Sacramento. It's not very often. I think it's about quarterly, about four times a year so far, so...
And it doesn't affect any of the other committees? Because we're a lot on the same committees, like the APC and the LAVCO.
No, no, they're on Thursdays.
Okay.
So, usually, it works out well.
Are you interested?
I'd be willing to put my name in.
Well, then, I think, you know, unless she's expressed a desire, but she can't live without it, I think...
She has communicated with me that she would like to continue, and she will take the primary seat if no one else wants it more.
Well, it's hard to gauge who wants it more.
I know. I was trying to say that in a politically appropriate way.
Either way, I'm good with it, but, you know, I think, I'd like to see Bruno involved with it, to be honest with you. So, I'd like to, you know, make the uncomfortable, awkward motion to make Bruno the primary and Moke the alternate if...
I'll say that.
Yeah. And it's not, it's not a reflection of Tina, it's just that I think, you know, Bruno's got some energy that we could, we could cap.
Tina has specifically said that she would like to stay on, so there you go.
Then, I'd be willing to let Tina be the alternate, and Bruno could be...
Okay.
So, we wouldn't...
Okay, that takes care of that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So, that's the motion, Bruno, primary, and Tina, alternate.
Let me get to some public input. Any public input on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Board, so go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
That's my motion.
Okay. Second. All right, there's a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Or 9:30. Moving right along, item 6.4, 9:30 item, consideration of a protest by unity adjustments of California... 9:30 item, consideration of a protest by Unity Adjustments of California to the consultant selection panel's recommendation of top respondent to RFP number 1906, request for proposals for Sulfur Ponie and Minasino Complex wildfire structural burn debris removal insurance cost recovery and invoicing. And B, approve agreement with Tetra Tech Inc. for Sulfur Ponie and Minasino Complex fire structural burn debris removal insurance cost recovery and invoicing in the amount of $328,050. And what we're going to do with this item here is we're going to go ahead and let Tetra Tech go first. We're going to do B first, and we're going to move through their proposal and talk about their presentation, and then we will move on to A, consideration of protest of Unity Adjustments California.
And no decision will be made at the close of the B presentation?
Yes.
No decision would be made until the end of both? That work for you?
Is, I mean, you have something?
If all you're listening to is the presentation, but obviously, you have to hear the protest before you can make a decision.
That's, we intend for that, but.
I didn't say that correctly?
No, it's, that's fine, I guess, sure.
If they're not hearing the proposal, how are they?
They've already made their protest, so I don't know why they need to hear.
Okay, well, if you want to just do it the way it's on the agenda, that's okay. We can do.
I'll bring it back to the board.
What is your preference, board?
Go A and B?
I feel we have all the information in our packet. It has the proposals, it has the protests, and at that point, I feel that there's enough information for us to be able to come in with at least a better, a good understanding of what we're being faced with today.
Okay, so go with it as it is agenda.
Okay, we'll move it as it's agenda is then, we'll go A and B, so.
So, Matthew Rothstein is going to make a few opening remarks, and you may want to, Mr. Chair, you may want to invite Mr. Ellenberg, the representative from Unity, to come up and be seated.
Bob, can you guys come up front here and sit here? Bob Ellenberg with Unity Adjustments, come on up, take a seat.
So.
Thank you.
So, and I'll provide, this is Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. I'll provide just some overview on the process, how we got to this point, before we hear Mr. Ellenberg's protest. As you guys are aware, as your board is aware, counties that participate in publicly funded structural burn debris removal programs are obligated to make reasonable efforts to collect any insurance proceeds that are reimbursed to property owners in consideration of the work performed by the public program. And because considerable insurance and other technical expertise is required to appropriately execute these efforts, the best practice is for county governments to contract with a private entity with that specific expertise to undertake the actual collection effort. Toward that end, the county issued RFP number 1906 on April 3, 2019, with a submission deadline of May 2, 2019. The timeline has extended beyond that time, in part because we've been waiting for billing data from the California Office of Emergency Services for a lengthy period. We did have a consultant selection panel convene on July 22nd to review the two proposals, and Tetra Tech was determined to be the top-ranked. The consultant selection panel was comprised of three department heads, also a couple of higher-level staff that are, had specific related expertise from the county, and a member of the public with a long history of experience in the field of insurance. That panel scored Tetra Tech's proposal higher by 199.5-point margin. Subsequent to that, the county initiated negotiations with Tetra Tech, and that resulted in a $70,000 reduction in the total costs provided by Tetra Tech from what was originally proposed, without materially altering the scope. And we had been in conversation with our disaster finance chief, Kathy Sagerland. She's satisfied that a clear and open process was undertaken, that everything was fairly reviewed, and as you're aware, Mr. Ellenberg is here to present his protest that was submitted last week.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. I'll only take a very few minutes of your time this morning. In my protest, what was just stated is that, first and foremost, it's not a unit cost proposal. The FEMA regulations stated in the Public Assistance Policy Digest, and I quoted them in my protest letter, they won't lump-sum contracts, they won't unit-price contracts. It specifically says, the second type of contract, a unit price, is to always be used when it can be. A unit-price contract is what you requested, and it's absolutely suitable. But to have Tetra Tech turn in an hourly contract proposal is not what the request for proposal asked for and not allowed according to the regulations. I understand it's your staff's job to make evaluations and recommendations to you, and that most of the time, you will take those recommendations as you should. That's their job. But you're also responsible to spend tax dollars wisely, and in my opinion, not only the Lake County tax dollars, but federal dollars that may come from the government's well, since they are all taxpayer dollars. I went to the Board of Supervisors' meetings archives, and I listened to the meeting of March 22nd, 2016. This was after the valley fire, and I believe it reveals the biggest reason for not hiring Tetra Tech. So let me cover a few points briefly. In the aftermath of the valley fire, the county staff made an initial count of around 22,000 trees to be taken out. It was based on driving all the roads, estimating the number of trees killed would eventually be a hazard and so forth. In mid-November of 2015, you entered into a contract to remove them, and it was a proper unit-cost contract that would be reduced if they didn't take out that many. It was later determined by the Office of Inspector General that it included a lot of trees that were not eligible. But about the same time, you entered into a contract with Tetra Tech for all the monitoring that would be required. It was a time and material contract not to exceed $600,000. The Tetra Tech proposal, which was made a part of the $600,000 contract, went to great lengths to state how they know all the FEMA requirements and what has to be done, including grant experts and so forth, not unlike the proposal they've given you for this. It was to terminate on 12/31/15, but it made provisions for extensions. At that March 22nd, 2016 Board of Supervisors' meeting that I just referred to, your staff came and said they had heartburn, that was their term, to present a request for an addendum to add about $1 million, making that total contract 1.6 million. The reason they gave, and I can list them, because it was on the video, there had been delays, and then they listed a number of other requirements, which they said added to the cost. Well, they explained to the board that every tree had to be marked and located, and the property owners had to be contacted, et cetera, and all of this had added tremendously to the scope of the job. You guys approved, I think, on an intermittent basis, not the full amount that they were asking for at that time. But I went back and I reread the request for proposal, and I read Tetra Tech's proposal. Both included everything that they referred to as reasons the cost went up dramatically, except for the time delay. In other words, all these reasons, they said it's going to cost a whole lot more, in their original proposal, that's what they were going to do. All the excuses they gave for tripling the Tetra Tech monitoring contract was listed as included items in their original bid. Tetra Tech often bids contracts with not to exceed numbers, but based on hours, not unit cost, and that's what they're doing for you right here. When the hours are used up, you either end up with an incomplete job, or you give them more money. Maybe this is why they're considered experts, as they appear to be experts in getting public funds. However, not only is my proposal a proper unit-cost proposal as requested, my proposal demonstrates how the amounts are to be determined that are due. Nowhere in their proposal do they give any indication they know how to read an insurance contract and make these determinations. And as a public adjuster, I can tell you, I have letters in my files where insurance companies have just out and out lied, stating what their liabilities are regarding these obligations, and try not to pay all that's due. If you want a proposal that's a fixed cost, as it should be, and a proposer who knows how it should be done, I'm your man. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
I'll answer any questions you may have. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Chair, you may, of course, under A, call for comment from staff or from the selected or proposed-to-be-selected consultant as well.
Excellent. I would like to start in that manner. I would like, obviously, this is prior to my time. I know that staff has any comments, and then we will move to Tetra Tech after.
My recommendation, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chair, would be to have Tetra Tech come up. They could both present their proposal and respond to the points raised here, and then staff will finish, if that's agreeable to you.
Well, let me ask the rest of the board.
You agree with that?
Agree with that?
Thank you.
Tetra Tech, if you can come on up.
We'd like to propose.
Yeah, if you can come on up, and if you can give us your names, please.
Okay. Good morning. I'm John Burry with Tetra Tech, Director of Proposed Disaster Programs nationally. Here with me is Claudia Hill. She is our proposed project manager for this engagement. We had some prepared remarks here to share with you, a little bit more about Tetra Tech and our proposal, as well as our work experience. Thank you for the opportunity today and the invitation, you know, and the notification provided by the county. As mentioned, I'm sorry, I'll move ahead. I work on programs nationally in our long-term recovery operation. That covers FEMA public assistance, FEMA hazard mitigation grant program assistance, as well as HUD's Community Development Block Grant Program tied to the disaster, and those disaster recovery funds. I've had the privilege of working with communities all over the nation, here in California, Texas, where I'm from, Houston, as well as Louisiana, Florida, and Puerto Rico. This is really important to me because of, this was our first project here in Lake County back in 2015, meeting with Lars and working with him and his team is where I was. I just finished a wildfire project in Texas, following Bastrop County, it's 1,600 structures, much like the valley fire, and I worked with them to, through their long-term recovery. And with me here is Claudia Hill, and who I've worked with for 10 years, and, like I said, proposed project manager, and I'll allow her to introduce herself.
Hi, good morning. I have been working with John, like he said, for over 10 years, and I've been working specifically with wildfire projects such as these insurance cost recovery programs in the state of California for the past four years, and we've, you know, again, worked with a number of clients, and to us, this project is more of a case management, rather than an adjusting role that we want to fulfill here with you guys today. So, we'll go on to discuss some of our experience, just in that role, and more specifically, you know, the project here that we want to fulfill for you guys.
Thank you, Claudia. So, again, we have worked extensively with local governments in this space, as well as other phases of the disaster recovery lifecycle. We have worked with clients to assist them with recovering over $6 billion in federal FEMA reimbursements. 99% of our contracts that we've worked are time and materials contracts. This is oftentimes, if you look at the regulations in the Public Assistance and Policy Guide, version 3, you know, as well as Title II of the Code of Federal Regulations, Chapter 200, it talks about those time and materials contracts. We're proposing time and materials contract here because it is the most appropriate, and there isn't really a more appropriate method of doing this type of work. And I'll talk about that here shortly. Again, a little bit more relevant experience here in California, as well as 43 other states, experience directly working with the disaster survivors. We've had a lot of work with, closely working with local organizations, like the Long-Term Recovery Operation, as well as tribes here in Oklahoma, as well as here in California. We've worked with Middletown Rancheria on the Cal Recycle Program, and we feel very strongly that we should incorporate that and provide visibility and transparency throughout this project. One of the things I would say is, when working with this program, is time and materials contracts are utilized when, again, three things need to be, three pillars of that. It's, number one is that the, there is no more appropriate method of doing this work. Number two is that there is not to exceed and a price ceiling, that if that is exceeded, it's at the risk of the contractor. And the third thing is that, that there is, it's closely monitored. It's, we're working with, or the government has that day-in, day-out work to make sure that costs are controlled. And so, number one we want to talk about is the issue of the appropriateness of this, and why we feel it's appropriate is because of the fact that there are so many outside influences that may impact our operation. Those could be changes in the FEMA regulations, it could be requirements of the state, it could also be the insurance provider, as well as the homeowner. There are many things that are outside our control as the vendor, which make this a more appropriate mechanism. In fact, Sean Smith with California Office of Emergency Services sat here on a November 15th, 2016 presentation and to the board here, when this item was previously considered, and talked about time and materials being an appropriate method for this type of work. So, I think it's, I think it's very important to be aware of that. You know, again, as Claudia mentioned, this is, as much as an insurance recovery, this is a case management process where, you know, our standard of care and how we work with the disaster survivor is, is that we are looking to, for them, to bring closure to their recovery. I know Lake County has been impacted by several events of the last several years, and when we've worked with disaster survivors in the past, it's to get them through the recovery. And we feel very strongly that the 2,500, you know, residents and homeowners that we've had the privilege of working with have gotten to that point. All of these projects, whether it's wildfire projects, or whether it's flood projects, we've worked across the nation, and we take that same approach. Here are a few fires that we have been involved in here in California, but what I really think is important is to show that project management team and kind of talk about our process.
I'll go ahead and tell you a little bit about the project team that we've proposed. So, we do have staffed three apprentice public adjusters. We also have four California insurance public adjusters readily on staff as well, to answer any, you know, additional adjusting, more specific questions, but we are fully capable of working with the insurance providers and are very knowledgeable of the duplication of benefits that we are intending to recover here on this project. And just so you all know, you know, we do take that case management role, so I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the disaster case management process. We have a four-step case management process where we really want to have a continuity with all of the disaster survivors. So, we stress to, whether it's when we hire new case managers, locals, this four-step case management process, which is, you know, one, we talk about perception. We want to know what the homeowners or the disaster survivors' perception of this program is. We have to be able to understand what they're going through. And, you know, if you go to the next process, we talk about knowledge. Our case managers are fully knowledgeable on the duplication of benefits that we are trying to recover. Again, it's the services that the state has provided that we want to make sure the insurance provider who are paying the disaster survivors, that the county is receiving those funds, because they're ultimately the ones that are paying for it. Number three, we talk about empathetic response and silence. So, we always give the opportunity for the disaster survivor to tell us their story. We have to understand where they're coming from. You know, every situation is a unique situation, and we just want to make sure we understand their side of things, their, you know, whether it's they're settling with their insurance company, whether they're going to postpone it, whether they're not going to build it, they're going to sell the property. There are a lot of different variables that come into, you know, trying to make it, come to a resolution for these disaster survivors. And then, of course, number four is a summary. We want to discuss with them a strategy on how we can bring these disaster survivors' cases to. with them a strategy on how we can bring these disaster survivors' cases to resolution. Ultimately, we want to close out as many properties as we can so that they can just move on with their lives and get back to normal and not have to, you know, be a part of this program anymore. So, one thing that we do provide to our clients is a specific weekly project status report, and this is more of a high-level piece of that report that we provide to you, again, on a weekly basis. This will drive the entire project. We will make sure that, you know, our point of contact, whether it's Matthew or whoever, is directly involved, and we want to make sure you know exactly where we stand in the project and where we're going on a weekly basis. And we alter this report based on your needs, based on what we think that you need to see on a weekly basis. Some other slides, I'll go through a couple. These are just some of the metrics that we provide to you on a weekly basis. We have, we use a recovery track database that is a live database where you can log in and see exactly what our case managers are responding to, you know, what types of phone calls we're getting, what types of, you know, in-house meetings that we're getting, the conversations that are actually happening with the homeowners, just in case, you know, something unforeseen happens, or, you know, somebody said this. We have a fully transparency on these conversations and correspondence, and we want to obviously make sure that the homeowner is aware of that as well. So, these are some of the more drill-down reports that we provide to our clients that can help you more understand more or less what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. We also provide daily intake metrics, so this might determine, in a specific phase of the project, we might have two or three people staffed here on-site to meet with different property owners, but, you know, six months down the road, you might not need that kind of support. So we might dial it back, and we'll be able to show you on hand, you know, what kind of intake we're getting on a daily basis, you know, three months in the road, and we'll be able to track that throughout the entire process. And then the same thing goes for the property status. Again, we're just iterating that the, we want to make sure that you are aware of where each property lies in our program. There are different phases that they typically go through, and these are some of just examples of the property statuses that we have found over the past, you know, couple of years that we've been working with clients and insurance providers. In order to come to a resolution, we need to make sure that everyone has, you know, a closed status, and these are just some of the statuses that we go through throughout the project.
Thank you, Claudia. So, one of the things, again, what we, our approach really focuses on providing that disaster survivor, as well as our customer here, which is going to be the county, with that transparency. One of the biggest criticisms with these programs is from the local, from the disaster survivor's perspective is, I don't know where I'm at. Well, we are going to take that and make sure that everybody knows where they're at in the process, where their documentation is. We're not going to lose documentation. We're not going to ask for it twice. We're going to be able to provide, whether it's a member of the Board of Supervisors, or a member of city staff, or it's a member within the community, we can provide that transparency so that everybody knows, hey, we're still waiting on documentation, we're waiting for, you know, maybe information from Cal OES, or maybe it's these two, these 22 new properties that are coming online that was, spoke about previously, that this is a dynamic program. Again, what we want to make sure that everybody understands is that the county is going to have a high degree of control. We make adjustments daily basis or weekly basis based on the project needs, and that this is, again, what is appropriate. So, you know, again, this is going to be an activity that is reimbursed at the prevailing cost share through FEMA Public Assistance and the California Disaster Assistance Act. Really, it is the utmost importance for the state to be on board with this. I think we'll be able to talk about that in a minute. But, you know, again, FEMA's going to look at how it was procured, the contract provisions, contract type and invoices, and, you know, again, I'll tell you, after doing this for many, many years, 45 different disasters over the last 19 years, that TNM is, time and materials, is the most appropriate because of its ability to efficiently and effectively address the scope of work and allowing for flexibility in the program, because there are so many outside influences that impact our performance. So, our team, again, is, has the history, customer service focus. We have worked with local and state applicants in this program, $6 billion in disaster funds, and provide that full service. And with that, Claudia, I'm going to ask you to talk about the two quotes here from Cal OES and some emails that you've had in the past.
Sure. So, just related to us working with, you know, the county, we also have to make sure we have a good standing and relationship with the state and FEMA, because, again, there's a lot of moving parts in these types of programs, and so we all have to be under one understanding. And some of the things that we've been told, or our clients have been told directly from the state and Cal OES, they've mentioned, you know, you should seek the help of Tetra Tech, and have you spoken to them? And they've specifically, you know, written in emails, we are very happy with Tetra Tech's approach, and they've, you know, worked alongside us, they're very responsive, and we know them personally. So, it's great to have those contacts just already in place, as well as Cal Recycle. They say the same thing. You know, we're professional, we've, we just, we, again, we just want to make sure that we're following, we're within guidelines, we're in compliance, and, you know, we're ultimately helping the community get back to the normal day-to-day life.
That was the, oh, sorry, that was the completion of our prepared remarks, and I would turn it over to Chairman Simon.
I think Stevens got it.
There you go. Excellent. Okay, thank you very much, Tetra Tech.
Thank you.
Admin, go ahead, Matthew.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, John and Claudia. So, with that said, just speaking to the specific matter of Mr. Ellenberg's protest, we're aware of the FEMA guidance that he cites, and we're satisfied and have, our disaster finance chief is likewise satisfied, that time and materials contracts are not prohibited under FEMA regulations, and also we're satisfied that the three-point criteria for a time and material contract to be appropriate has been satisfied in this case. And again, as we mentioned, the cost for this particular agreement proposed to your board today is $9,000 lower than any of the submitted proposal costs, directly responsive to our RFP. So, with all of that considered, and in light of the additional detail provided by Tetra Tech, staff would recommend that your board deny the protest and award the contract to Tetra Tech.
Anything from the board?
Can I ask you to repeat something you said, which I didn't quite correlate with what I had read? You said that the cost was less than the others?
Yes. So, the cost of the agreement before your board today is $9,000 lower than the lowest proposed cost that came through the RFP process, and that was the result of our staff's negotiations with Tetra Tech. And the time and materials contract proposed for your board today was a material part of that. This was the approach that was best available, and as both representatives from Tetra Tech said to your board earlier, it's something that's very normatively used in the recovery projects that they've managed.
So, the $328,050 is, does not match what is on the original, at least in the packet that I'm looking at, the original Tetra Tech amount?
Correct.
Okay, so that was renegotiated, or, okay?
Yes, and at the direction of the consultant selection panel, staff undertook negotiations with Tetra Tech, and certainly the overarching intent of FEMA regulations is for taxpayers to get the best possible deal, and that was certainly our intent.
Okay. All right. I'm glad that makes more sense. And as far as, just to put in my word, I too concur with what you just said about meeting the standards for FEMA. As far as I'm concerned, I think any kind of bid, you have to base it on your own finances. You are paying people a certain amount, and it says, both have the same exact template that was used with the 312, and then what the cost would be for each portion of that job. At the bottom, it just describes what the hourly wages are in case there's something we ask that is outside of the proposal. And that, to me, it doesn't make, it doesn't create a bad situation for the top part, because I think everybody at the top part is thinking of, what do I pay my employees, and how much is it going to cost to do these things, and then they put the numbers in those boxes. To me, it looks all legit from my perspective.
And if I can have a brief moment, additional moment, I also wanted to raise that Mr. Ellenberg had discussed something that had happened with a previous project, with the tree removal project. That is a project of a very different nature. It may be something that is of interest as background to your board, but it isn't, the two projects are not directly comparable. So I wanted to make sure that we had raised that point as well.
Thank you, Matthew. Any more comments from the board at this time?
I do have one question, and Ms. Grant, this one's for you. Reviewing the agreement, it pretty much says on there that the agreement is for $328,050, you will do these services. That's, it says on there that for additional things, we can go ahead and negotiate, but for what's on the scope of work that's there, which is the 312 properties, that this is finalized, you will go ahead and process these properties. Is there, I mean, I guess there's always the possibility of them coming back and saying, we want you to pay us more to finish the last 12 properties, but it seems to me like it's pretty solid as far as what the agreement looks like, that this is what you're going to do, and this is what we're paying you to do, for you to do it.
Yes, the contract does have a not-to-exceed amount.
I thought I was Ms. Grant.
Go ahead, Nita.
That's fine.
I am not Ms. Grant.
Okay. You're also not the lawyer, but that's okay, too. Yes, you're absolutely correct, and yes, things can change depending upon circumstances, but that would require additional prove-up. The bargain for exchange that exists here is for the amount specified, and both sides are expected to honor the terms thereof.
Right, right. I think that, I think that was it.
Mr. Ellenberg, did you have, I rebut to a comment from Matthew.
I would respond to a couple of things. Bob Ellenberg, it is correct, TNM is not prohibited, but it absolutely says that you should use a unit cost where it's appropriate. Tetra Tech says it's not appropriate. You listed 13 specific tasks for 312 properties. It is very easy for anyone with any business acumen to assign a time and cost associated with each, in all of those tasks. That's why mine is a unit cost proposal. He made the statement that if it exceeds, it's the risk of the contractor, and I heard Mr. Sabatier addressing that very much in his questions. I don't read their proposal that way. I read their proposal the way they've done it in the past. They bill by the hour, they do not bill by the task, and when they run out of the dollar amount, the $328,000, and the job is not finished, that I believe they have the ability to come back and say, well, we need more money. So, if you want to accept their contract, and I think they're capable of doing the job, I mean, I can do all the things that they said they would do, I would do all those things, but if you want their contract, then get real specific and say, for the 312 properties, or if you want to add the other 300, the other 22, for 334, you'll do these 13 tasks for this amount, not to exceed. He said, if it exceeds it, it's the risk of the contractor, get them to put that in their proposal, because that's not the way they normally do it. They normally don't take the risk, the government does, and they extra bill. So, you want to take their contract, get them to put it in there, that that's guaranteed for those 13 tasks, for those 312 tasks. You're not asking them to do anything else. You come back and ask them to do something else, sure, that's appropriate, but you've been real specific, you've covered everything that needs to be done. I know this work inside and out. There's nothing else that needs to be done other than those 13 tasks. Thank you.
Any more comments from the board at this point? If not, I'll go ahead and open it up for public input. Any public input on this issue? Seeing no public input, we'll bring it back to the board. Now, there are going to be two motions on this, correct? We are going to...
First, you take up the question of the appeal, and by motion, your board will grant or deny that appeal.
Okay. So, board, I'll bring it back to you.
And you were going to say something?
We don't have any further comments. Just to reiterate, we are aware of the guidance that Mr. Ellenberg cited, and are satisfied that a time and materials contract is appropriate in this case.
So, the two separate motions are just, okay. So, I will motion to deny the protests by Mr. Ellenberg.
Unity adjustments, I think.
Yeah, unity adjustments.
Is that good enough?
That's fine, if there's a second.
Second.
All right. Motion to the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, moving right along. B.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, what was the vote?
To deny the protest.
To deny the protest.
But what was the vote? Three to one?
Yeah, I thought that you said four.
I did, but I thought you said, okay.
Three to one, yes.
What was your vote?
I apologize. Yes.
Your vote was to go with the appeal?
Yes. No, to deny the appeal. Then what was the motion?
It's to deny the appeal.
Yes.
Okay, so it was four, four to one?
Yes.
Four to zero?
Yes.
I thought I heard you say no, so that's why I was...
No, 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 I did not.
He asked if there was a no, I think, yeah.
I asked if there were any no's.
Always good to clarify.
I was continuing it, Rob. The first time I did it, you said there were no no's, and that was unanimous, so all I did was continue with the no. Now, part B, approve agreement with Tetra Tech Inc., Sulfur Pawnee, and Mendocino Complex Wildfire.
So, I will motion to approve agreement with Tetra Tech Incorporated for Sulfur Pawnee and Mendocino Complex Wildfire Structure Burn, Debris, Removal Insurance, Cost Recovery, and Invoicing in the Amount of $328,050.
Second.
But a motion to the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, motion passes, four to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. We'll go ahead and move right to 7.3. A, Consideration of a Side Letter to the Lake County Deputy District Attorneys Association Memorandum of Understanding. B, Side Letter of the Lake County, the Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association, MOU for May 7, 2019, December 31, 2019. C, Side Letter to the Lake County Correctional Officers Association, MOU from July 19 to December 31, 2019. Side Letter to the, D, Side Letter to the County Employees Association Units, Number Three, Number Four, and Number Five, MOU, July 23, 2019, through December 31, 2019. E, Side Letter to the Lake County Safety Employees Association, MOU for July 23, 2019, through December 31, 2019. F, Side Letter to the Lake County Sheriff's Management Association, 2019, MOU. G, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 28125, Establishing Salaries and Benefits for Management Employees for the Period from July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019. H, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 2018126, Establishing Salaries and Benefits for Employees Assigned to the Confidential Units, Section A, for July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019. And I, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 2018127, Establishing Salaries and Benefits for Employees Assigned to the Confidential Units, Section B, for July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019. Okay?
Well done, Mr. Chair. That was a lot.
Carol, go ahead.
So, while we await the results of, and recommendations from our classification and compensation study, which is in full swing, as a gesture of continued good faith with our employees, staff is recommending your board authorize employee recognition and retention stipends. It would be a lump sum payment to each eligible employee. Specifically, permanent, full-time employees would receive a one-time payment of $1,500 to be provided to all who are on active status as of... to be provided to all who are on active status as of November 20, 2019. Permanent part-time employees would receive a proportionate share in relation to their permanent part-time status. Our payroll office has committed to paying out all stipends prior to March 2, 2020, but with that said, also planning to make a valiant effort to actually issue stipends in time for the holidays for all of the labor groups agreeing prior to the agendizing of this item. And the good news is, we moved very quickly and got very positive responses from all of our labor groups, all signed their side letters quickly with, with hope that we can move this along very quickly. And so what staff's recommendation to today is to review, or to approve items A through I. As an, as one additional note I should probably make, there is an additional item in your packet that is a letter from Public Services Director Lars Ewing, who I met with yesterday. Director Ewing has the largest number of extra help, which are non-permanent hourly employees. His department uses extra help staff for a lot of different things, and in his letter, he's making the point that he believes that the county should consider some, doing something for extra help employees as well. That is not included in the proposal today, but if your board wishes for staff to look at that, we certainly can and come up with some kind of recommendation.
Any comments from the board? Did everybody see the letter?
No, I have not seen the letter.
I do have a hard copy of it.
But I know that I, I did have a private conversation with Carol and did bring up the extra help, and it seems that there's a larger variety of, I guess, categories that extra help would fall under. And so I, I think that it requires a more in-depth conversation to figure out what can be done, if anything. And I'd like to pursue that, to look at that, because I think that anyone helping us at this moment in time to offer the services to the community that we are offering are part of the team, and I think this was an idea to offer a extra boost in, uh, income for those that are part of the team.
Yes.
And so I'd like to definitely pursue that and hope that the rest of the board will agree with that. And again, that's not to say a promise that we'll figure out something, it's just, we should be looking at it, because we should be looking at the big picture of the entire county. One part also that we had talked about was the letter I, I believe, which was for elected officials that are department heads. I just wanted to make sure and make public that we here are not voting to get a stipend for ourselves. This is us, if approved, us voting for department heads, such as the sheriff, the auditor controller, the assessor recorder's office, that they would receive the stipend, but we would not as we are not department heads. And I think that's an important part with, we are voting and we are gaining, it has a different perception than if we are voting and we're offering. So I think that's, that's an important one. And one that I will ask also of our CAO, Ms. Hutchinson, is, I know that the class and comp study is important. I, I have high hopes that we have the ability to take some action. I think that we need to be real that some of this action may have some long-term plans, some short-term plans, and we'll see how that looks. But I know that some of the communication to all county employees, when I was reviewing my emails, had a different timeline than what, potentially a different timeline than what we are on, and I was hoping that we can be transparent today and let people know what the timeline looks like at this moment in time and when potential action on the class and comp might be taken.
Thank you. If I could respond to that, Mr. Chair?
Could we just address the issue? Any more comments on the side letter from Lars Ewing about looking into our, the other employees that we have missed in this, currently at this time? So would like the staff to look into that?
I'm interested in that, yes.
Come back with something, some type of proposal?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
You will.
Go ahead, Carol.
So then to respond to Supervisor Sabatier's request about an updated message to all staff, we absolutely can work on that. Department heads have received regular updates, but you're correct that, that staff haven't received an update since September, I believe. And the way I would like to approach that, we sit back down at the bargaining table with our labor groups next week, and I honestly, I would like to get their input for that messaging. They were really helpful to us around the messaging for the stipend and, and definitely have, you know, the finger on the pulse of, of employees and, and so, so with that said, the intention would be that we release an updated message by the end of next week after we have gotten labor rep input to it.
Okay. Any more comments from the board at this point? All right, go ahead and open it up to public input. Any public input on this item? Seeing no public input, I'll bring it back for some motions. We'll do each one of these individually.
Resolutions, I think, right?
Or...
I think, Mr. Chair, it's up to you. You can proceed A through F individually, or what you can do is entertain a motion to approve a side letter to each of the following bargaining units, LCDDA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA units 345, LCSEA, and LCSMA.
And then there's just three resolutions?
Yeah.
And then three separate resolutions.
GH, okay. Preference of the board, so, go ahead.
I want to say one, one last comment and may get me in trouble. I know that originally, and this is my personal thing, I expected that we might be at a point where we can offer something, and unfortunately, I think we created a larger beast than we thought by making changes to specific positions, which has made the class and comp study a more difficult task. And again, this is just coming from me, because we've tried to patch so many things in the past, and right now, we're trying to start with a very clean slate, which makes the, especially not the compensation, but the classification, more of a difficult task for us to figure out, how do we compare when we have so many mixed positions? And so my opinion and, and my, my efforts, and again, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for myself, is I had anticipated that we might be able to say a bit more about actual wages today, but that's not the case. But we don't want people to feel like we're not doing anything, and so we want to say we appreciate you, we want to say that we appreciate the efforts you're making every single day to make a difference in our residents' lives, and this is not a last effort, this is a bridge towards the final efforts of what the class and comp, comp study is intending to do. The class and comp study is still very much being worked on by administration as we speak right now. And I, and I say this because I know historically, there's been a one-time thing and then dropped, and I just want to make sure and be as transparent as possible that this is not what's happening right here today. This is step one of multiple steps to come. And so I just, I feel that I need to be open about that and that that's where we're heading. And so more positive coming up in the near future, we just can't make decisions without everything in front of us to be able to make a very good decision, and so we will get there.
Thank you, Bruno.
I just have to support what Bruno's saying, because I know, working in places where, you know, different people leave that are working on different aspects of projects, other folks have to pick that up, and, and also when positions are, I guess you could say usurped into other positions, when you have a department head taking over another, it gets, it gets overwhelming, and then they have to pick up all of this new stuff that they weren't doing at one time. And so I know that that's also put a burden on this study as well, and so I, I agree with, with what Bruno was saying, and just want folks to know that, that we are working to be transparent, and I'm glad that you mentioned that in the light of public inputs comments earlier, so just wanted to highlight that.
Any more comments from the board? Okay, go ahead and entertain some motions.
And again, did we say we can do it all in one fell swoop?
No.
You, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
We can do, right, we can do A through F?
Yes, with the motion...
And then we do the three resolution.
Exactly. The motion for A through F would be to approve side letters to each and every of the following bargaining units, then list the bargaining units, A through F.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the side letters to the Lake County LCDDA, LCDSA. Do I need to actually say their names?
No.
Acronyms work. LCCOA, LCEA, LCSEA, and LCSMA for the dates of July are to expire on whatever. I'm not going to say a date, because they're all different.
Yeah, we got two, because they're all different.
But I approve the side letter for those...
Is there a second?
All second, yes.
So there's a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes, four to zero.
And, Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution, amending resolution number 2018-125, establishing salaries and benefits for management employees for the period from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019.
Just offer the resolution.
Oh, I offer the resolution. That was easier.
Yeah. We do a roll call?
Yes.
Supervisor Campbell?
Yes.
Supervisor...
Aye.
Supervisor Campbell?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And then I'm on H. I offer the resolution, number 2018-126. Or, yeah, I offer that resolution. Amending 2018-126.
Okay.
Supervisor Campbell?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Campbell?
Aye.
Yep.
And I offer the resolution, amending resolution number 2018-127.
Supervisor Campbell?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Campbell?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion passes. Resolutions passed, too. All right, moving right along to our, we got him on the board here. 7.4, dash 191128. A, discussion consideration of recruitment for the registrar of voters position and/or B, discussion consideration of restructuring of elections functions, or C, consideration of appointment of interim registrar of voters. Carol?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, excuse me, we have agendized this item in such a way that your board can discuss all options and, and then take action at the conclusion of your discussion. As you know, the registrar of voters, Catherine McMullen, is, her final day on the job is December 2nd. Because your board does not meet on December 3rd, it will be necessary for you to take some form of action to appoint at least an interim registrar of voters today, so...
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Supervisor Sabatier, go ahead.
So my, my opinion on this matter is obviously, and this one's not an opinion, it's just a, a matter of fact, we have to give interim to somebody. That part will be a discussion. The other part where it comes to restructuring, I, I don't agree with the restructuring. I think that we are asking a lot from every single one of our departments, and combining a department and asking a department head to take on multiple departments has, there's an impact. And I'm sure many of you know, the, the, last time we were here, we had the discussion about bringing it to the auditor controller's office, and this is not a unique ask when we're looking at the rest of the state, but I think we have to look at the way our departments are structured, the workload that they have, and does that work for us to restructure it that way? There, there's a couple of things. One, I've been talking to the department head auditor controller's office, who, we are fortunate enough for how hard she works to get things done in her department. I don't think it would be kind of us to ask her, oh, well, since you work so hard, maybe you can take on more. And, and it will take on more, because there, there's a specific need from the registrar of voters that would take up some of her time. I don't think that would be fair of us to do that. I'm looking at other departments that we've consolidated, and, and I won't go into great details, but I'll ask you to speak to those department heads. There is a, a juggling game that happens when you start consolidating and you're at the top and you don't have the people underneath you yet to be able to support that kind of consolidation. And, and I think that we are, we just talked about the class and comp, that's, that's a revenue, an income stream for those who are working, but there's also a number of hours in a day, and how tired you get, how tired you are when you get home, and how much you actually get to enjoy your life. And I think we need to think about that balancing act for our employees as well as our directors. Also, I look at the state, the physical state of the registrar of voters. If we do put it with the auditor controller's office, what is the chance that the registrar of voters will ever get to finally go out of its little tiny closet space that's being provided to them for the work that they do? They're not a large department, but that is a very cramped setting and, and not a very, not conducive to, I don't see it as a positive setting when you're that cramped. And I think that all of our departments are, are in that situation, and we need to think of how we can alleviate some of those situations. Connecting it automatically and restructuring with the auditor controller tells me that that will stay cramped for a very long time, until we figure out how to move the whole entire auditor controller's office out somewhere else. I haven't heard any of those conversations. I know there has been conversations about moving the voter, the registrar of voters' office into other places. Nothing has necessarily come of it at this moment in time, but at least some of those conversations are happening. So I would support the idea of interim with the auditor controller's office, but that we continue to look for a director to keep that as a independent department, who then, as an independent department, can make the request that that department needs, not the request based on a much larger department, and also that they can focus on the specific task at hand for the registrar of voters. That is my stand on that.
Anyone else from the board?
I don't disagree with that at all.
Public comment?
I, I don't have any disagreement with what, what was stated.
Okay. Well, at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board for some more comments, so go ahead. Any public comment on this issue?
Mary Borjan, Kelseyville. I'm an active volunteer in voter registration activities countywide, and I would like to see the department remain separate. I understand you need an interim director for now, but in the long run, I'd like to see it remain independent for two reasons. One, I believe that it can promote more transparency within that office if it's not under an elected official, official. And also, I agree with Bruno's comments about how far are we going to stress people? How much are we going to dilute the work that department heads are supposed to be doing? And I just think that it needs to remain separate, and we need to respect the work of each department that they need to do independently. Thank you.
Any other public input?
I'm not busy talking about cannabis or hemp. I did spend some time in the elections office, and it's, it's a very critical function to the county, and I just want to stand up here in support of the staff remaining, which has been through pretty dramatic change over the last few months. It's hard to comment without any real feel for where the board's going on this, but I see there's three potential options up there. I think you can bifurcate the issue. Clearly, you need to appoint somebody to be the point person during this interim. The broader issue of reorganization, whether it belongs in, in like the department head or whether it stays reporting to the board, I think you can buy time on that issue. It's an important discussion. I don't know that that has to be decided today. I, I can, I have seen firsthand, I like the idea of an accountable department head that reports to the board directly, but I'm also very sensitive to the concerns that Ms. Hutchinson has raised. There are some administrative overhead functions that it's very hard for the ROV to do. There are some administrative overhead functions that it's very hard for the ROV to do on a very standalone basis when the only one or two very department head level staff doing that and trying to herd all the cats in terms of poll workers, extra help workers and what have you. And the clock is ticking, so all I can do up here is try to convey an appropriate sense of urgency that you don't necessarily have time to settle the broader policy issues. You need to get some worker bees in there that actually know how it's going to work here in Lake County to reassure the workers you have that you have their backs and that they're going to receive adequate direction moving forward with this March primary. We have candidate filings that need to get done. We have candidates here today. So, it's a very important function, but if I were to stress one point over another, it's appoint your interim and then ramp up the staffing as best you can to accommodate these very critical functions that are coming up, not in the spring, but right now. We're right in the middle of candidate filing. There's campaign finance reports that have to get filed. There's a lot of deliverables that the office needs to do. And not just the board, but also the community at large has to have some faith that there are adequate resources due to do that important job. So, go team. I probably put aside the policy debate on the ultimate leadership, but I'd say definitely, let's focus on getting an interim in there that can address these short-term staffing issues aggressively. Thank you.
Any more public input?
Yeah. And so, yeah, I'm worried too about the timeline, you know, putting out for and waiting for a new registrar of voters in the meantime could, you know, cause a lot of potential issues for the primaries here in March. So, I too know that we're, in essence, we have no, we have no choice but to appoint someone in the interim and try and get that department going. But I too still feel very strongly about keeping it a standalone department. I understand in the meantime, that may not be feasible, but that is my, that is my thought process, so I just wanted to state that.
Go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
So, you know, I agree with what's stated and I just want to qualify that a little bit. First of all, it's a big deal. It's a big deal to make and it's, I don't like the, you know, gun-to-your-head decisions to be able to have to make this in this short period of time with everything that's coming up with deadlines and elections and all that coming up that are pending relatively quick. So, what I'd like to see us do is the interim with the auditor's office and then begin the recruitment process and see where we end up with. You know, I think that's a good way to start. We can always, I don't like the idea of either of, and I appreciate Kathy's willingness to accept it on even more than an interim basis, but even at least on an interim basis, but it's not, it's not fair to her office for just making that assumption that she would take it because it had been taken years and years ago. In the meantime, you know, I would ask that, you know, maybe we can reach out to our past registrar of voters, Diane Friedley, and see if she'd be willing to come back and work part-time. I haven't spoken with her, so I have no knowledge of whether or not she'd be interested, but having worked with her for a couple of decades and, you know, she's been retired long enough now that maybe she'd be willing to come back for a little bit, you know, anyway. And certainly not a reflection of if she tells us no, but at least we can try. And I think that would be something that would give everyone a level of comfort, at least to get through this next series of deadlines and elections. So, maybe the board would consider that, but in the meantime, put it out there, you know, to try to recruit somebody, so.
And speaking of the deadlines, I just passed out to each of you the elections calendar for the March election. And you'll see, if you turn to the bottom of the third page, it gets us up to the present where it's the beginning of a long list of deadlines and things that have to be met. And I also invited Kathy Sateram to come down and join us. I hope she'll be here in a moment regarding the discussion you're having about interim.
Yeah. So, you know, from my point of view, I think consolidation is an opportunity. I think it's the long-term answer at this point. You know, obviously, we've lost, let's say if you put them together, about 60 years of experience in that department for registrar of voters. Thought we had made a good decision, moved forward, but with the resignation definitely puts us in a situation for looking at the long-term stability of that department. And I think, you know, from my point of view, I see the stability being of having someone who, obviously bringing someone under Kathy or the clerk's office there to be the registrar of voters, you call it chief deputy, and maybe a deputy assistant under that to help with stabilizing that department. It's always been a very small department. It's been a challenge for us, obviously, to support that and get them the workers that they need. If it's consolidated, I think it's, would be a good positive thing for the long-term stability of that department. Those are my feelings on it. Obviously, we'll go as the board, you know, wants to. It's not like it hadn't been done before back in, I think the conversation was back in 2002 or so. It was separated out. The conversation is about answering, you know, being under an elected official. Well, whether it's its own standalone department or it's underneath clerk's office, it's going to answer to an elected official. Five in one manner, which is the board of supervisors, all elected officials, or the one elected official. So, I think in the interim, with the election coming up in March, you know, that would be the prudent manner to move forward at this point. Recruitment, as we know, will take at least 120 days or more. Maybe it happens sooner than that, but those are my thoughts on the issue. But ultimately, the board will decide how we move forward to get a registrar of voters that's going to be stable and moving forward and protecting our voting rights here at the county. So, those are my thoughts. I hear everybody's concerns, but I think the consolidation is an opportunity for us to really stabilize that department and give us the professionalism on both sides. Someone who knows the voting, the registrar of voters' position and also the management side from the clerk's office. So, that's where we are. Those are my comments. Kathy, do you have any comments at this point?
Carol did call me down here, and this is the first time I've seen the election schedule, so just so you know. And I have not heard all the comments that have been made, other than the fact that there's some direction, and I'm not clear on what that direction is at this point. But if you're talking about an interim appointment, I'm always happy to assist wherever I can. I think we need to have, for me, I need to be able to plan and included in that is some vision. And I'm not sure that I would be the right person for an interim appointment for you from the perspective that we're talking anywhere from a month to three months to four months to fill that position of the registrar of voter. Based on this calendar, I may not be the right person for an interim appointment for you. So, I want to put that forth to you. If you were going to move forth with consolidation, it does put a different spin on it. So, I just, I need to let you know that. It's hard to, I'm trying to use the right words here. It would be hard to have a good vision for that department if it was done on an interim basis. And there, and I would not be able to plan. And looking at the calendar, I am currently in a very busy time for my office. So, I'm kind of going to leave it to that. It's harder to acquire a department head level position than it would be if it were something different than, if it was a team approach. I can't take my current staff and have them buy into an interim support mechanism at this point because the training involved with that would be for nothing. So, I do need to share that with you. I think we need more of a vision on this, long-term, and I'm happy to assist in any way I can, happy to reach out to, I think it was mentioned, reach out to Diane. I have a problem reaching out with her, to her. Supervisor Brown and I have already spoken with one of the former employees in that department in preparation for whatever might come. And I do think you need to maybe hear from them and see what they think would be an appropriate movement forward. I'm not going to address the, so much the accountability, whether it's an elected official, one elected official versus five, because I think that that's a non-issue. I think it needs to be what makes sense for Lake County, not who that specific person is at this very point in time. So, I don't know if that helps at all.
Thank you, Kathy.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
So, so right now, and I, I can only speak for myself, but it's kind of a majority consensus that we would do interim and then, if you heard that part of it, that we would...
I heard, no, I did not hear all of it, no. I'm sorry.
In the event of a standalone, you know, my whole thing is I don't want to make the decision, the entire decision today.
Okay.
But what I'm hearing from you, and I see exactly what you're talking about, you don't want to make plan, there's a lot of planning that would occur just to keep this as an interim. And it would be planning that would ultimately affect whoever the department head is, whether it be the interim continues as under you or the new department head. So, so all of that planning has to go into this calendar. So, that, with that in mind, what's your preference? And I'm not trying to put it, if you say, you're always a team player, always, and I get that, I appreciate that, but if you say, you can't do it, we've got to figure out something else, I get that and I'm okay with it. But I want to hear what you, what you think. I'm hearing already that interim's not your preference, interim, and then go back to a standalone department.
Interim is not my preference if the decision is final on whether there's a consolidation on the table or not. That's what I'm kind of saying.
Okay. Because I can bend either way on it. I'm telling you right now, I can go with whatever's going to be best for that department and best for the county, but I don't want to have to make that decision today. We have to make a decision today, but it doesn't have to be the ultimate decision of where this thing's going to be forever. And you're right, if it was interim, it's likely to be until after the election, until after certification. I don't see that, I don't see anything changing from that. I think we need to be honest with ourselves. An election's right around the corner. And so, you're right, it would be a big, undertaking a big ask for you to take it as an interim without being able to make the long-term plans and the long-term vision of what would be in that department, so.
Go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
Yeah, so I just had a quick question for, would interim include like a one-year or two-year, like if we said, no, we're going to go ahead and consolidate for a term of two years? Is that still two interim or would that, that would at least provide some stability? And would you be able to, like, would that be, would that be good for you? Would that still be like, no, I need a longer-term type of agreement for, that would still be two interim?
What, I did hear Supervisor Sabatier's comments, so that would kind of go against what you're saying is the reason for not consolidating, right? So, if you make it that way, if you say consolidation is off the table because you don't want to overburden a specific department head being the county clerk, you haven't eliminated that then.
Right. I think either way, it's going to be a headache, but...
Yeah, I think that, you know, and I'm trying to take out the personal part of it, the actual people in those positions at this very moment in time and say what makes sense for Lake County.
And then just a reminder, you know, you have a decision point coming later at the end of Kathy's present term. You would then have the option to consolidate the offices of treasurer, tax collector, and auditor controller at that time. And that would be a time, if you did that, then you would need to do something different with county clerk elections. It could not remain attached to the consolidated office. So, as you think of interim, that's another consideration because the day, if you go with that financial office consolidation, the day would also come in approximately three years where you'd be making a decision about county clerk elections.
And I would like to address one other thing that I did actually hear.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Supervisor Sabatier, you mentioned the proximity to my office the election staff is and how we're very cramped in that area. And you are absolutely correct there. We are. And one of the things that I had on my list in just my 15-minute, this is how it could work with the, adding more depth, is to definitely explore those options of moving elections to a better location for, to better serve the citizens. Because right now, it's just, it's not just that we're cramped for us workers, we're not, elections is not accessible to the public where they are. When there's an election and they're having to come through and up hills and all of that, there needs to be a better location and there has been for a very long time.
I appreciate you saying that. I agree.
Yeah. And with that in mind, the administrative office had been supporting the registrar of voters to look at office space with the intent of bringing a proposal back to the Space Committee and if, you know, if it passed muster there, ultimately come to your board with a recommendation for a different office setting for the elections office.
Okay.
So, I guess that was why I wanted to say, I'm happy to assist because of my close proximity and the knowledge and the overlapping functions that we have, that the county clerk has currently with the registrar of voters' office. If you made it an interim appointment with another department head, that would be fine too. I would still provide that same, I would still provide a level of assistance with that. So, really, it is, it is up to your board on how you want to move forward and what you think is best for the county, for the department.
Thank you, Kathy. Supervisor, sit up to your.
So, I just want to agree with what was brought up by Supervisor Brown. If we can try and have a conversation with our prior registrar of voters to at least help out in the interim. I know that right now, the department has 3.75 full-time equivalents. We still have maybe 1.75, I think, left in that office at this moment in time. We have a person coming in, I believe, in early December. We obviously want to make sure and support this person so that we don't have to go back to 1.75. And I'm hearing positive comments about this new staff member coming on. So, at that point, we will be at 2.75, just minus one. And I think that if we can get some help, if Ms. Friedley is available, that would help us really take that load off. I feel bad even offering to say interim for Kathy's department, but I also know that what we just approved of earlier is added-on burden to our auditor controller to get all that prepared. Now, also, as we move into the class and comp, there's going to be added burden for those decisions made onto the auditor controller. I think that we have to prioritize and I think that we can make this work. I think we need to try and find some of our previous directors from that office and see if they can take that burden off of Kathy. Because I want this to be the shortest-lived burden possible to say that she will be interim. I don't like, I don't know who else to provide it to, and at the same time, I don't want to provide it to her as well. But we, I think we need to be swift in finding a replacement, maybe continuing some of these conversations to see how it's working and where we are and if maybe we need to go with the consolidation two weeks from now, three weeks from now and just see where it is. But I think we need to stay very proactive in seeing how is this working, how is this moving forward? Because this right here is added work, again, to whoever's going to receive it. But in light of the new information and Supervisor Simon's statements, I still stand on where I believe that we should go. And I appreciate the comment.
Yeah, appreciate that too, Bruno. But, you know, like I've said from the beginning, I think that the restructuring underneath the clerk's office would be the long-term stability that we need in the county. It would allow us to hire a plio or the individual coming in, you know, we get a chief deputy and then a deputy that can actually do the registrar of voters... and then a deputy that can actually do the registrar voters', the work in that department for the elections, and will give an opportunity for cross-training in the department if there ever, we're losing some folks and everything. We're always looking at a succession plan. They don't always work out as, as planned, but I think this gives us the best opportunity as a county to really help stand up the registrar voters' office to be strong during this transition. Like I said, we lost 60 years of experience in that department, and it's going to take a while to, to get that back. And we have some unknown commodities that may be coming in, starting in December, like you said, but we still have to feel those out. So, those are where we are. We, you know, we go with the pleasure of the board, obviously, but I want to state my, my position, and I think that that is the path, so there we are.
And I just want to say one last statement. We've been talking a lot about the directors and the potential interim director, but I really want to say publicly, thank you to Savannah and Lourdes for hanging strong throughout all of this, from losing both our chief deputy and our director, and then now losing our director. Thank you to them for sticking through all this and being there. That, that means a lot.
Okay. Any, go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
So, what, I have a suggestion, and we, the 17th is the last board meeting of the year. It's three weeks away. Some holiday stuff going on. What I would suggest that we do is we go ahead and make the interim appointment with Kathy. I was looking at the calendar here, and I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff, there's deadlines, there's, you know, candidate statements and, you know, filing and all that coming up, but, you know, she, there's probably not a lot of changes in policy that would, would be required for that, just be some staffing, you know, staffing there. And I don't want to minimize what they have to do, but I think, you know, the, the big stuff's coming along with the election. So, what I'd like to do is do the interim, and I'm afraid we're, you know, we're not completely looking outside the box. I think we got, you know, just a couple of options here that are obvious, but maybe there's others, and, you know, we can reach out to Diane, and I've had a little bit of communication with her just today, so if we come back on the 17th, we have a better, better idea of what we're, we can make a decision by then, I think.
And we'll also have the new person and staff and seeing how that affects.
Yeah. Kathy, does that work for you, is that, if we do the interim until the 17th?
Is there a reason you're not suggesting the 10th?
Well, I'm trying to give, I mean, yeah, I'm trying to give time, but yeah, we can do the 10th, I don't care.
We could just continue the item and see where we're at each time, because maybe you'll be more ready the 10th?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
No decision today?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Fair enough.
Except I think that we still need to make interim today.
Yeah, no, I think so. We have to, because the second...
And then we open a recruitment, which, you know, there won't be a status update that early, but...
Okay.
Yes.
All right, then, if there's no more discussion from the board, the input is closed, we'll go ahead and, someone want to make a motion?
A move that we place Kathy Sederland as the interim registrar voters, and that we go ahead and move forward with a recruiting of a director for the department and reconvene the conversation on December 10th.
10th or 17th?
Can I, just for discussion, I would ask, and again, I don't want to put Kathy on the spot, but I think it's really important, her input on this is, is the most important part of it for me, and, but I also, you know, feel like, you know, asking questions that we don't know the answer to, there's always a risk to it, but what I'd like to do is see if there, you know, a couple of board members, if she's comfortable with a couple of board members, and maybe we can meet and go over some stuff, see what options are, because I don't want to, I want to come back with a recommendation. I don't want to, you know, make this stuff up as we go along, and we're, you know, we may be able to come up with a good, solid recommendation based on her input, and I want to be able to do that in a, in a candid manner before we bring it back to the, to the board and the public. So, is that something that anybody would be interested in?
I know that I've had some very good conversations with Kathy in the last few days since Friday.
You may have thought they were good, but I haven't talked to her yet.
On a variety of subjects, no.
You got a different perspective when she talked to you?
No. But I, you know, it maybe, maybe you and I could meet with her and go, is that okay with you?
Sure.
And of course, with the board as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for, yeah.
And I walked back up here to clarify, that would be as, the interim would be as of December 3rd through December 10th.
Correct.
Upon her leaving from office, yes.
Yeah, that's my understanding of it.
Right.
And we're set on the 10th, not the 17th?
Yes.
All right.
And motion amended to the specific date of when the interim commences.
Okay, do we have, that you covered, is there a second?
Yes, a second.
All right, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy.
Okay, moving right along, I think I've hit everything on the calendar here. We can go ahead and go into closed session. In closed session, we have 8.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation to government code, section 54956.9 D1, existing litigation, Warner versus Nutson. And 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, section 45956.9 D1, existing litigation, Heart Consciousness Church versus the County of Lake. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting and go into closed session.